Time is 4:30 PM. Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting, 25th May, 2021, has called the order. I'd ask those in our council chambers, if you have not signed in on the clipboard at the end of the table, if you would do so before you leave, and if everybody would please put their cell phones on vibrate. A roll call of members, Daniel?
Councilor Steve James. Council Rep. Mallory. Councilmember Scott Markow.
Here.
Councilman Steve Foster.
Here.
Want to welcome each and every one of you to our second council meeting in May, both in the council chambers, also those joining us by Zoom this evening, and also remember that our council meetings are shown on Channel 14 on Wednesday evenings. A few announcements for the next couple of weeks. Tomorrow, Wednesday, May 26th, from 10:00 to 11:00 AM is conversations with the mayor at Historic City Hall. Also, Monday, May 31st is Memorial Day. City offices are closed, and remember that 10:00 AM, there's a Memorial Day service at Pelican Rapids High School Fine Arts Auditorium. And our next city council meeting is Tuesday, June 8th, at 4:30 PM here at City Council Chambers. Any other announcements?
There will be any discussion, but they have scheduled a ribbon cutting for the new playground at 1:00 on Friday.
Okay. Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here for citizens' comments? Seeing none. Item number three is additions or deletions to this evening's agenda. Any additions or deletions? Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I will read. 4A is approval of council minutes from May 11th, 2021. 4B is approval of accounts payable listing. 4C is club on sale liquor license and Sunday on sale to Donna Mattern on behalf of Gilmore We- BFW Post 5252. Item 4D is on sale intoxicating liquor license and Sunday on sale to Aurora Escobar at proprietor for Akila Escobar. Item 4E is malt liquor and wine and strong beer to Cheryl and King as proprietor of Muddy Moose Company. Item 4F is malt liquor license to Charles Evenson as proprietor for Southtown Sea Store. Luke Lorzell is proprietor for Paul's of Pelican, Inc. Item 4G is staff reports, which include, number one, liquor store report and utilities report. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number five is pool personnel, Superintendent Brian Olson.
Yes, just quickly, if anybody knows any lifeguards, please, please send them my way. Tonight, I have found a pool manager, and her name is Abby Mooney. She is an English teacher at the high school and willing to take on the job for the summer, so she will be paid $16.72. And then I have one lifeguard so far. Ian Fay has applied, and his rate of pay is $11.08. I guess I'll probably have you make motions on them first, and then I'll ask one more question of you.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
And then, in hopes that we probably will have the pool open prior to the next council meeting, I would like permission to take on lifeguards and get them approved at the next council meeting. We've had to do that before, but you've given me permission to hire, and then we'll actually approve names at the next council meeting.
Motion and a second, discussion, discussion. Brian, do you know how many of that will be?
Well, in the dream, it would be 15. I'm hoping for 10.
The people that you've got now, are they going to be here all summer, or are they going to be off doing other things?
That's what I'm never aware of, because, well, the manager will be here. She has a couple commitments already made for the summer, but as far as lifeguards, the kids have had many things. That's why I like to hire so many lifeguards, because they're all involved in this camp and that camp and going here and going there, so we need to cover those hours that we're open, so.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
Perfect, nope, that's it, thank you.
Item number six is truck purchase. We have Fire Chief Trevor Steves with us this evening. Trevor?
All right, thank you. This is a truck that we had actually been working on a few years ago, and it is part of our replacement stuff. We had updated this truck about five years ago with gambling fund money. We had an old DNR excess property vehicle that just wasn't functional for us anymore. We picked up a used truck and ran that for the last five years, and now it's time to replace that. So I have a price quote from Nelson Ford for a 2022, which might end up being a 23, because it's 20, right now it's 22 weeks to get a chassis, so that puts you almost in January, so somewhere there. But the vehicle price is $34,182, and then, of course, we have documentation fees, and even though we're tax exempt, and the city is, we still have to pay tax on that, because it's MINDOT tax or DOT tax. So we have that, and then the other part of that truck is an aluminum service body, it's called, kind of like you see on the Lortel trucks. We run one of those now, it works very well. A new one of those is about $10.8, so around 11 grand. Then we're going to have a little bit of painting costs, we'll just paint the bottom two-thirds of the chassis, that's about three grand, and a little setup charge. So it'll just be a little bit north of 50 grand. And then with that, talking with Don, our rescue tools are 20 years old. Our rescue tools are, for lack of a better term, what's called the jaws of life, and everybody remembers that. So it seems like, yeah, we just got those. I looked tonight before I came up here, and we received them in late 2001. So that doesn't sound like that long ago, but here we're 20 years down the road. And what we're looking at going to is, right now, we have a full hydraulic set, so we have a little gas engine, little Honda, fire that thing up and hook the hoses to it, and they work great. If that motor doesn't run, those two will don't work. Fortunately, we have a good maintenance program, they, it runs. But what we're looking at going to is called hydraulic, which they are battery operated. And each tool now comes with two batteries, and they are really phenomenal. You have less maintenance, because you don't have that gas engine, you don't have hoses, it's all a confined unit. So we're looking at four tools there, and the price on those is just under $50,000 for all. Well, there's four tools, and then a couple pieces of hardware that go with them, too. So total budgeting, I'll let Don speak on this, we're right, we're looking at $100,000 as a lease purchase, like we do with all of our equipment. Don, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, basically, I contacted SCV Public Finance, who we've got repossessors from the past, and we can set up a lease purchase with five payments, annual payments at 1.25% with the first payment after coming through in January of 2022, and the annual payment would be $20,658.
And we've already have budgeted a $5,000 and a $4,500 in our budget that was to go to this purchase, so we really only, slash $9,500, so we'd really only be increasing it to 10.5, and that's about, what, 4%? Is that what we came up with? For the total increase on the budget?
Oh, yeah, I think you calculated.
Yeah, I calculated that under the budget, it's about a 4%, and that's pretty on par for what we've done.
Yeah, this will be the 2022 budget, which this will, for the year, that you guys will see shortly.
Kind of the biggest thing is to get, it's like everything else, to get materials, to get product, to get this thing ordered. Once we get okayed and we can get, even the body, service body, too, is several weeks out, it seems like, doesn't matter what it is, that there's a big lag and stuff. So this will give us the winner, then, to put it together. We'll do a lot of the work on it, putting it together, and be ready for next spring. And then we have some resale in our old one, just like we have in our other equipment, so we'll put feelers out for that price, and then we'll turn that and see what you guys want to do with those funds, so.
Do I have a question? Trevor, I'm just, why are you speaking?
I'm just, I'm waiting. Trying to guess this question? No, no.
No, I'm just curious, the battery power job, what, how much is that?
Well, it's, if you've noticed, if you've ever, if you've gone in the Home Depot or hardware store or anything, the amount of equipment that's battery operated now is phenomenal, and they've really come a long, long ways. So each of the tool that we order comes with two batteries, and they're not just the plug and play, they're actually designed into it. So the runtime of on them, you got somebody who's proficient in running that tool, we could cut your suburban almost in half in one battery. If you want to see it done, we could arrange that.
Are we buying one of them?
No, we're buying four. So what we buy is a cutter to cut, like, you know, any of the metal, like the posts, a spreader to open doors, the hood, everything else, a ram to, like, lift a vehicle or do a dash roll, it's called. Then there's a tool that's a spreader and a cutter. I know, so they're four separate tools.
Are they changeout heads onto these bodies, or are they all?
They're all separate, but all of those batteries are interchangeable. So if you're using one tool and also you're going through a couple batteries, we still, we will have eight battery backup. And what we're going to do is, just like when we buy equipment, we'll have vendors come in and let the firemen work them, they decide what they want, but I got a budget number, a good budget number from a company, and he said, this is what you can go with, so that's what we're looking at. But it's a technology that's really come a long way.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and a second, discussion?
The truck that we got now, do you have any idea what that's worth?
I would say we could easily, I'm not going to say easily, probably in a five to six grand range, but you know how used vehicle prices have gone up. It's a 2003 Ford F-350, four-door, crew cap, it's V10 gas with a utility box, you know, no rust on it, so, just like our last tanker we sold, I was hoping to get six, and we got 13 out of it. So I would like to, you know, be up in that upper, closer to eight grand, especially, you know, with the service body on it and stuff, so there's some resale. Both tools could also have some resale, a few thousand bucks for them, you know, maybe up to five, so.
How do you advertise them?
With salesmen, especially the salesman who sells us the new stuff, will definitely try to push our old stuff for us, and I have through publications in the fire service, whether it be in the magazines or just online, so. I mean, I sold that last truck over on Craigslist, you know, it's a public forum, so.
Will they take the tools and, like, the trade-in, or?
They could, you know, typically on something that's 20 years old, you're better off going into open market on that.
Any more discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven is pool committee. We have a pool committee members, Kate Martinez, Amy King, and Mark Doc, and with us this evening. And also in your packet, there's the minutes from March 8th and April 12th. Let's approve those minutes before they make their presentation, in case we have some questions for them. Is there a motion to approve those two sets of minutes?
Sure.
Motion second? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. And it looks like Amy is going to talk to us.
I am. We also have Rudy Martinez, who's also part of our pool committee, and as is Trevor Steves, and he walked out the door on us, but he had better places, I think, to go. No, just kidding. But, thank you for having us here again. We've been in front of you several times over the last few years as the Pelican Rapids Pool Committee. Once again, we've been working hard on fundraising and increasing our amount fundraised towards our pool project. We're coming to you today, and you can see on the sheet in front of you that we have raised with commitments from city commitment, corporate and private donations, and in-kind donations. We have raised $2,575,390.94. Included in that is, we were working on that match from the large donor out in Washington. We've raised $410,000 of that $500,000 match, and so that's included in that number, has not been realized as cash yet. She was kind of waiting to see where that ended up before she sent the check, but she's also signed a commitment for that dollar amount, so if something would happen to her health-wise or something like that, that it would still be honored through her estate, so. So that's kind of where we are right now. We came to you in February, and we talked about our project, and we had gotten a recent cost update, and that's listed at the top of the paper that's in front of you. It came out at $4,333,665. And so as a committee, over the last few months, we have been still working on moving things forward. Just an update, we applied for bonding funding this year through the legislative session that was denied. It was brought to the legislature by Representative Dean Erdal out of the cities. It was in partnership with our local representative, Jordan Rasmussen. It was denied, and we could possibly apply for bonding funding in the next funding year. However, conversations with many of our legislatures have indicated that that's not a very strong possibility at all of us receiving that funding because of the type of project that we're doing in the COVID era, where there's lots of things that need funding, those sorts of things, so.
Do you know if this funding was close to being approved, or?
No, not even close. No, we were not even in the discussion. We have a, both Kate and Rudy that are on our committee have a very good friend that's on the bonding committee. He actually was the chair this year, and just in personal conversation off the books, said your project will not get funded in the future, just based on the nature, outdoor pool, they don't go through very often through the legislature. He didn't say do not submit it, but just very real talk that way. So after that happened, our committee's been talking about how do we move forward? And so we are here today because we have exhausted a lot of our options as a committee, and we are coming to the city council to hopefully have you, as a council, pursue bonding funding to fund this pool and start the construction process. Our goal as a committee was to have removal done this fall, and that would be mostly through in-kind donations that have been secured, and then we'd be building in the spring of 2022, so about a year from now approximately. And so our request today is that the city would move forward with the bonding funding needed to build this facility. We feel it's that time where costs are going to continue to rise in the construction of the facility, and the potential we have for fundraising is starting to diminish as far as the people and the population we have to be able to go and ask for additional funding. It's not that we won't get any, but do we have the capacity to quickly raise enough funding to overcome the rising cost of construction over time? Our committee feels that we're at the point where we need to move forward with building. So with that, unless Mark has anything else to add, we'll kind of turn it over to you for questions, discussion. Yeah.
If, Don, if we did say yes to this, what's the timeline?
Well, first of all, we're still waiting for the plan and specs to be completed by the architect. Once that stuff gets done, you know, it would cost us, and if I can obviously reach out to a bond house and find out, you know, as far as, you know, the timeline of getting all that set up, that typically would take pretty long for them to, you know, put all the documents together, do it through the council, approve, you know, that type of thing. But at some point, the kind of architect will be done with the plans and specs, and through the bidding process, so that we have an actual, actual cost to put, you know, to put off through the bond. I think if council wants to, agrees to move forward, that'll be part of the next step, is to get a hold of our bond home and lay out the timeline of all of that. It's not typically take really long to issue bond, you know, all the documents that's put together. I would think of at least, like, you know, got a hold of them next week or something, like, they probably be ready to go with the draft, get it. I know they're, that's still working, because they're designing all done.
So this cost estimate, is that the final cost at this point, or?
That's as best we know. That was as of February, that they updated current costs, and then I think the final will come with plans and specs, is my understanding. Is that correct, Don?
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, the plan and specs, that you guys approved, that proposal that you, the solar and, you know, all that, that was included in all that stuff, so I think, based on the cost, the cost estimate that you see on the page, there's been some data, and do we know what true going to cost? Not, no doubt.
Correct.
So, and I think from talking to the architect, too, you know, everything is slowed down because of COVID. Yeah, they could, you know, bid it off, or whatever the case may be, try and start construction, but they tend to the winter, then to the spring, but I don't know, we wouldn't have a pool. There might be a time later in the year, from what I've been talking to the architect, we don't have the real true, deep construction. There might be a time in August when we do, possibly, everything falls into place, hope for it to just start introductory, open type thing, make sure that it works, try it out, whatever the case may be. And then, obviously, that's kind of limited, too, by the resources of lifeguards and stuff at that time of year, to be able to open it, but then it would be short-term, shut it down, and then it would be something else to go on to follow in turn. And ask you, keep the construction materials ready, so the way we hope it, if it's going and gets done, but that's not going to begin to work.
When the architect supplies the final plan, will there be a cost estimate variance or fifteen?
There should be, this is the end.
That should be it. Okay. The reason I ask it, with the price of materials, David.
The other thing that, that, you know, is kind of how does it all run, work together, is, you know, in order to get the bond, we've got, basically, on how much do we want, do we want the 4.9, because we've got financing costs from the two, from the construction expense, those 4.0, $3.3 million dollars, or about $90,000, and we add the other, $60,000, I guess is what the number was, for financing to do the bond. So, and you know, that's put in place, so we're almost at 4.1 million dollars. But the unknown at this point is, do we need 4.1 million in bonding, or do we fly it down a little bit, fly a donation? And so we have to be very clear on how much we have in donations, that could actually be acquired, when we start needing a bill for construction, is that money accessible? That type of a thing, because then that would maybe possibly offset the amount that we actually have to bond for. If we can bond for freedom, the 3.2 million versus 4.1, it obviously would seem.
Yeah, but they'll, they'll, they're always going to.
Yeah, so I know. They did try to explain, you know, three months, like, the last year, if it was, how much we actually have available, but we could pull tomorrow if we need to pay a, you know, $300,000 bill. So, you know, I need to just verify that with what's on the mission, and make sure that we have a good handle on what we have for the bond.
Thomas from the council.
I just like, I wonder, and maybe somebody can answer this, this estimate, how solid is it? Simply because, I know if I go get an estimate on a home build today, that estimate's good for one week. If I don't decide in a week, that estimate's no good, the materials are going so nuts, and availability is so out of control right now, that I wonder what this will actually be.
I asked him that same question, because housing prices have jumped thirty-some percent, you know, would, would construction, pipe material, the delay and everything else, and costs have went up? And I asked him about this specifically, and he said, the thing about this project, we're not dealing with this. This is all concrete, and there isn't a concrete issue out there necessarily. And the only way we know for sure is when we actually go up for bids, and we get them bid fast, it's $5 million, and then the council decides whether they're going to shove it until we can figure something else out or whatever, but you won't know exactly what effect cost pricing, the price increases, and stuff has had, until we do it. You know, and I won't do bonding until I take back what, you know, people are bonding all in place, and possibly know what that number is, the bid's happening first.
I'm wondering, is this architect putting together some options?
The architect is putting together what you guys approved, this proposal and the plan that he's built, was shown, presented to you by the pool committee. That's what he's basing his, his total and the specs on, you put that to people who need to do.
And as far as options, when we came in February, we had explored some different options, but several things came up with that. One, that all of our large donors were shown this plan, and so to dial back on this plan, you're now asking people that have given up to $1 million, that we're not presenting you an end result with what we presented as our original plan. The committee just felt we couldn't go back to people and explain that. Also, as we looked at specific amenities within this plan, the cost breakdown of, for example, taking the Lizzie River out, was so minimal as far as the big picture, that as a committee, we really looked at that and looked at the options and just, unless you're going to completely change the design of what we're doing and go back to basically a square box, which is what we currently have and do not want, that's not the goal of any of this committee work or anything, it doesn't change the end result enough to make an impact, that we felt that we should dial back on what we presented to our donors, so.
Okay, I agree with what a lot of you said, what you said there, but, I mean, another question we've got to solve here is, this year, we're having a great deal of difficulty getting the people to run the pool, and we haven't solved that yet. We're, if Brian was here, maybe we're, what, two weeks away from opening? A week away from opening?
Can I speak to that just a little bit?
Yeah.
So I personally know Abby Mooney, as does several of the people on this committee that's been recently hired. She came about as a suggestion from, actually, our pool committee meeting, that we found out there was not a previous pool manager. She is an adored teacher, and had, just in conversation with her, she brought it up and kind of advertised it in her classes, had many, many students express verbal interest. I know that that doesn't go to an application, but she's a person that people want to work for, and so I think, in my opinion, just give it a little work for, and so I think, in my opinion, just give it a little bit of time here, where kids need to get out of school and kind of realize they need a job or, or look to that. She's a phenomenal hire, um, to get in there. She'll do a great job as far as just managing the pool, but also to get kids interested in being a part of it. Um, also, we've talked about as a committee, do you want to go work at that facility? It's not, um, as far as facilities goes, it's not real desirable. This is a destination, this is desirable to be at, be a part of, um, you know, I can't predict the future and tell you whether you're going to have lifeguards or not, um, but I do know that you have some really strong representatives within the school that are going to pump this as a great opportunity for our kids as well, um, and help to advertise this as a, a great place to work in the summer, so.
Any other questions?
Go ahead, Steve.
No, I'm done.
Amy, I really appreciate the work you're doing, everybody else, but it's our job to ask questions and be, you know, um, I won't tell you, I don't buy, you know, swimming pool stuff, but COVID was bad, but right now, these shortages in inflation is just unbelievable. And like I said, I don't necessarily buy the same thing, but I don't see them breaking out until next year. I, the article came by my computer today and it said, "Why can't cities, schools, find people to work?" And you cannot find people to work, not just schools, but it's really getting bad. Um, one of the shortages, you know, you said cement's not a problem, steel is, um, steel is a nightmare. They will only pour it out a couple days, and then you wait two months. So there's no way anybody could do a pool in February. Things are just, it's just unbelievable. I don't know where it's going to go. Inflation will be incredible, and, um, it's, uh, really going to rain. So that's my concern. I, and I realize what you're saying, you can't stand that, but, um...
So can I pose a question back to you?
Yeah.
What, as a committee, what would you have us do?
I'm not, I don't have that answer. I'm looking for answers, uh, for myself, and I...
You know, we've, we've gotten to this point where we've, we've gotten commitments and raised 2.5 million dollars, and we have million dollars in cash of people's hard-earned money sitting there that they've pledged to this project and they want to see me forward. And as a committee, we constantly get the question of, how are we moving forward? And we're at the point of saying, we need the city to move forward.
I spoke to a home builder this morning, he was telling me the original pool fee and I started up several hundred pounds, but...
Yeah.
It was less than a three quarter of a million dollar.
And, and we completely understand it. That's also why we feel, if you back off, you're going to continue to see inflationary costs on this project.
Not only that, interest rates, interest rates are projected to go up.
Oh, for sure, for sure, yeah.
If you postpone this a year, Steve, you're looking at inflation cost for bonding increase next year in addition to material costs, and he's going to predict, oh, we're going to be right next year. But when you get to this stage next year, you're going to say, oh, then it holds up in here.
No, I didn't say hold up, but I just, I'm telling you my concern, I'm seeing it business-wise. Yeah, it's a nightmare, so.
I feel if, you know, if we do move on with this tonight, we're going to say we're going to fund, our safety net is, wait till the bids come in, and then we can reject them at that point if they're way too high.
Right. I think that's really our only next avenue.
Yeah.
In this, we'll never know if we don't at least proceed to bidding.
Correct. So I think...
Bidding's astronomical as I believe it's going to be, we're going to, at that point, going to have some real hard conversations.
So to say we move forward doesn't mean we're committed to the very end.
No, I understand that, I just, I'd have to tell you all about...
No, and I, I fully recognize that. I think too, just to continue the conversation and thinking long-term, you get the bids and potentially more cost than this, what are you doing then at this point when you have a million dollars in donor funds, more than that, once we get the match sitting in cash? And honestly, I, I speak for myself, but I think for our committee of, we have been the face of this project to move forward for now three years and have raised this much dollars sitting in a bank, if we all of a sudden put the brakes on this, we still own their money. We can't give their money back, it doesn't work like that. And so what are we doing for those people that have put their hard-earned money into this project for the city?
Don, if we go, if we go forward with bonding, with the, the available donations, how many years of payments for those bonds do we have already? Do you have a think?
What do you mean, is you...
Well, we have, we have payment, we have our bond payments basically paid for through the, through the donations, correct? Would we be, I mean, if, if you're not, if you're, assuming we bond at, at the full...
A full, you bond for the full 4.1 million dollars. Then I would assume at that point, then, if donation dollars would be used, maybe to pay the bond payments for period time, or somehow that has to come into it, because if you bond the whole thing, and that's a question I have to talk to West Central Initiative about, if you bond for the whole price type of project, what happens to the million dollars that's setting down? Because, you know, or do we just bond for freedom, knowing that that other portion's setting down? And that's, to me, that would be the way to go, find out exactly how much we have, and then that's setting there...
Bond for the balance?
And bond for the balance.
Well, I, I guess, I, I would, I make the motion that we, I don't know, you have to, you have to contact our bond agents or bond people?
Well, I, yeah, I do, but I think, but I think for you guys, what they're looking for is you guys to commit to, you know, covering your balance for the school project to go forward. Um, then, if you guys do that, then it's just a matter of my next step will be getting all the West Central Initiative to try and firm up what is that bond number that I've used, like, you know, holding.
We can't commit to that until we know what the, what, what the bids are.
Well, you, that'll just, that'll just kind of get us working in that direction. You still have, when the bids come in, when you have them, you can just say, that's way more than our budget, in a sense, and it's not going to fall. Maybe just have a shovel in the project, where you can say, hopefully we can move forward. But the, it, basically, with the, with the bonds and, and getting, getting an idea of what the, what, what the bond amount is, they'll be able to come, we're not still committing to issue bonds, but I can at least come to the council and say, okay, here's what the finance costs are, here's what the tax impacts are going to be, that type of thing, based on what we know today. Then we'll just know by the bid whether it's going to be worth, not as bad, or whether we're moving forward for it.
How's the balance? Do you have a note?
I, I'll drop.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I don't know what...
I want to make a motion to move forward or to, to start the process, but I don't know what that sounds like.
I think that's what it's going to take for us to see what comes around the corner next. I mean, with no commitment to the have to build the project if it comes in at three times this amount, you know, I mean...
That's your motion?
Yes, question.
I, I think we need to see the bid. I cannot believe if somebody could bid, I mean, there would have to be all kinds of contingencies, I, I would like to see, that's what we need to see.
But I don't think we can bid the project until we have a commitment of dollar amount.
Well, you actually can, because he's, he's putting the proposal together, and when he gets that done, the next thing is to average, you know, their company shares the plans and specs and everything with the council, the city's product, and the next step when you see that is going to be getting it out, and what then dollars come back to you?
That's what we, that's what we need to get to.
Correct me at any point, but the timeline for bonding, I think, I think everyone's a little bit, I think everyone's stuck a little bit in the timeline of funding. And I'll speak from public, public education in terms of the way the bonding works for in our end. Might be a little bit different for, for municipalities and cities, but you propose the project, you identify the project, you identify the need, from then you go to your board to obtain, to pass a motion to move forward with the, to show the interest, so, so after you guys tonight pass a motion and say, "Yeah, we'll support the project, move it forward," then it's Don's job to then contact the, the engineer that is working on the proposal, in addition to bond counsel, the lawyer that's putting the paperwork together, before you go out to bid. Bid is almost the third step. Then, then, and as the city council, and at least in, in our end, as, as a school board, we're not committed, it's not legally binding until you accept the lowest bid. So even if you pass a motion today, it's not set in stone. You guys can still wait until all the bids come in to entertain if you want to move forward or not. But what it's, what we need tonight is for you guys to pass a motion, so then Don can then move forward in entertaining bond counsel, an engineer, to put all these documentation so we can go out to bid and then come to you guys and say, "This is what the original proposal was, X amount of dollars, here's all the bidders, does it make sense for us to stay put or move forward?"
Because if we don't move forward, we, we have no clue what the unknown would have been.
Exactly. Exactly. And even at the time of bid opening, you guys can say, "It's not the right timing."
So you'd say we have to vote to get pricing?
Oh, no, no. I think what they're looking for is you guys to make a motion that you will cover the need to make the project go forward, if it goes forward. You know, because you guys, you committed 1.2 million dollars, or 1.2 million dollars now, and there's a 1.5 million dollar gap. You're willing to consider covering that gap through bonding if we move forward the project?
And that's the way we arrive at seeing bids?
Yes.
That's all we see in that.
Yeah, they just kind of want to know if, if, if the city is, is willing to put, instead of 1.3, 1.8 million, or 2.8 million, to make this go, if everything else falls into place, if our budget, you know, that has a...
If we don't move forward, we'll never see the bids.
Well, there's no, we'll stop today if we don't move forward, essentially. Right, right. Now, I agree, I agree we have to move forward to that point of seeing the bids.
And then the first part you just said.
Well, if we don't, if we don't move forward, choose to move forward tonight as a, as a council, the project's done, there's no more, finished. And they're going to sit with the donor money in the bank, and we're never going to look at bids, and we're never going to, we're never really going to know which way it could have went.
But by moving forward tonight, that's telling these guys, the, the swimming pool committee and the community, that the city council is willing, if the bids come in where they need to be, is willing to put 2.8 million dollars in that.
Correct. You know, it'll just be another day or two, and somebody will say, "Well, how much is this going to cost?" You know, that's a blur of, you know, yeah, we want to please everyone, but...
And we fully recognize that, too. We understand, we're taxpayers here in the city as well, but my, my, I, I think we've been working on this project for three years and have raised all of this cash sitting there for a project to move forward. What do we do?
You, you won't know tax impact until you entertain an actuary, an operation, an financial analysis. So it's not fair to say how much is it going to cost us, speaking from a taxpayer, because you're not at that point yet, because you haven't made the motion to get to that point.
Well, we could estimate free down the whole, so, you know, for a million dollars.
I have it. Like, if you, if somebody wants to know what the tax impact, it can be...
Nobody's asked a question.
They will.
They're in conversation.
They will. But it depends on the bond amount, but based on, based on what I've got here, if the bond has to be 4.1 million, 4.1 million dollars, on a $100,000 property valuation residential, it would be an additional $151 a year or $15 a month. On a $200,000 residential, it would be 380 a year or 32 a month. On a $200,000 commercial, it would be 682 dollars a year or 57 a month. That's at the 4.4.1 million. And I've got some in between that, so that's, the majority of our houses and developers at 100 to 200,000, if I get you an idea, most businesses, I shouldn't say most businesses, there's a good chunk of them that follow me that 200,000, but there's a 500, there's some 500,000 dollars that's out there. The 500,000 dollar businesses, it's 1943 dollars a year, additional profit factor of 162 a month. If we can get that down to 3.3 million, then that $100,000 goes from 151 a mo, a year to 120, so it's just dropping down to $2 a month, $10 a month. A $200,000 house would go from 380 to 303, or 32 dollars a month down to 25, you know, some of those numbers. On the commercial side, on a $200,000 commercial, it would drop from 583 to 545 every year, or 46 dollars a month, which is 57. And on that 500,000 dollar, uh, commercial property, it would go from 1943 down to 1552 or 180 a month. Let's determine the bond time. Twenty years, and because, because of the type of project this is, you cannot go beyond 20 years, it's, uh, it's definitely not allowed. I shouldn't say that. If you want to go beyond 20 years, that's possible, but then it has to go to a referendum point of the community.
And just to remind you, Mark knows this, but there's nothing really to it. You can figure out what it is for your own, but it's not the same for example, for businesses. And you're in favor of, or you're...
For businesses, I can figure out and come up with that money. The residential is harder, I feel, because they can't adjust their income that they have coming in. But for what he's talking about, I can go back to the store, figure out where I can make up and cover that. I do that on a yearly basis, because expenses increase all the time for me.
You mean as far as raising prices?
No, costs, efficiencies, I just invested in it heavily. So I'm creating efficiencies in my refrigeration, electrical, more than covers that.
But it's still big bucks.
Yes. But the reason I joined this committee is because I was a kid once. Somebody invested in me. Everybody's looking at the expense of youth, not the investment into the youth. You're talking expenses, that's all you guys are concerned about. But look at what the youth have, offered to them nowadays, it's different than what it used to be. Things are getting taken away. Now it's electronics. So if you want to continue to take things away from the youth, opportunities, teaching them to swim, you know, you have to think of it as an investment, and not so much an expense into the youth.
I'm worried, we don't just look at expenses. You know, we're all, yeah, we all care about the community, so, but it's our job to...
No, your, your concerns are legit. You know, I'm not arguing that your concerns aren't legit and with what's going on right now, but I'm just showing you what I'm thinking. And as a business owner, it's not a big deal to me. I'm going to be paying it just, you know, I have a few properties, and I have a business. I'm going to be paying, I know that, you know, but it's not a concern to me. I can figure it out, and I have children, I'm going to invest in my children and the community, because somebody did that for me, you know, in my hometown, you know, whether it's school, whether it's pool, you know, things like that. Now, I also know, I see it with schools being not, you know, getting denied, referendums getting denied, and then look what the costs do in five years, six years, you know. So I don't know how long you want to postpone, or, you know, but it's going to go up no matter what you do, you know, and if this gets pushed off for a couple years, you know, or three years, it could be significant. You could be looking at a 10, 12 million dollar pool, even without the COVID stuff.
We're also paying, based on the cash that's at West Central Initiative, we're paying a fee, the cash that's at West Central Initiative currently, we are paying a fee for them to house it for us. And that was something decided by the council when we originally went with West Central Initiative. So if you postpone this project, that dollar amount that we've raised will continue to go down, if, the longer it sits there versus getting applied to a project and getting pulled out of West Central to get applied to those. Because there are fees every year for them to house our money, and we can't just pull it. There's laws that say you have to pull it to go towards the project that these people invested it for.
And just to kind of support Mark's point regarding the investment in the community, and I have to speak for the Hispanic community in town, who, we're talking about equitable access to, to, for them to go and have fun. We're known as the lakes area, yet nobody that I know in my community owns a lake property that has access to water. That pool, when you go in the summertime, it is packed with Hispanic and Somali kids.
And that is what we're doing, we're investing in that dream. That's, a, a, and I fully support it. Today alone, I had a two-hour meeting with the Minnesota, Minnesota Council Latinos Affairs Committee that lobbied heavily down at the Capitol, and I brought this to them, of how disconnected rural Minnesota is from central. I would love to give them the pool, I would love to give them a community center. And we're talking about federal programs that can help finance things for diverse communities, but we always get left out of the picture, because all the attention is in metro areas. And now that's a whole different topic that we can discuss, but back to Mark's point, this is a huge investment for our community. And speaking as the Finance Director for Public Schools, this is going to be a huge attraction, from the community ad platform to things we can do. If you guys want, we can partner up to offer a community at class where we get kids invested for the labor piece. There's so much opportunity. This is an investment, you guys. Not for us, for our kids, for your grandkids.
Thank you.
I think the other thing we have to look at is our current pool has been duct taped and patched and painted for the last five years, 10 years? And every year we wonder if it's going to open. Well, that's not going to get any better either, because eventually that's going to come to a point where the inspector isn't going to even walk in there, because it can't be paid, patched, it can't be painted, and it can't be, can only put so much lipstick on a pig and it's still a pig. And at one point, we're going to come with, if, if we don't move forward, at some point, at some point, we're going to face, be faced with making the decision of closing the pool and tearing it down completely and having nothing there. And I know there's park board members there also, but we have enough, currently we have plenty of green space, so I don't think we need another park where the pool used to be.
Counsel.
I would make a motion that we move forward with this with the intention of building the pool, but getting our first steps of getting, uh, exploring the bonding and...
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion and second, discussion.
So is that, does that satisfy?
I think what we want is that shows the community that the council is behind this. I don't know what the wording exactly was, but I would love for Lou to put it in the paper, that the city council is moving forward with bonding for the pool. Now, does that still give you an out? Sure. You guys still have that opportunity to have an out, but we want it known in the community that this council, that this city is behind the project, unless something astronomical happens and bids are out of control, and then we get the answer for that when that happens. But honestly, that, I, I don't remember the exact wording of the motion. Personally, I want it stronger, I want a show of support that the city is behind this. That's just a personal recognition, I don't know how my committee feels.
I think we're just also, we're so tired. We have put our life into this, like, you know, we're totally like, hours away from my family, uh, well, but away from our daughter again. We want you guys to be excited about it, because this has been, for what, the last three years, this is our life. We extended, you know, so many other opportunities because we're looking so bad. And, um, one, it's not just for me, obviously, but, um, we understand the financial part of it, and it's important to ask questions and, and trust the key personally, donors and whatnot, and we're not, we're not going to quit, but we're, we just want to also recognize we're, we're so exhausted. And we just truly believe in this pool and our kids and our community, and we want you to feel that passion too. And we also want you to do your jobs as a councilman, which you are, um, because we want to be united, I think, as a, as a full committee and as a state council, and, um, moving forward with that way we all know how, like.
I think we would love to see some of your side of the project, all the person I do super duty, and that's, we're starting on our end.
Councilman Foster, did you want to change any language in your motion?
No, I want to move forward with this project and I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. I don't know if it's, sounds, we got to go ahead and do this, you know, step-by-step procedure, and that's what I want to do with it, so.
And that's your own support?
Yeah.
I second.
Any more discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried, thank you. Appreciate it. Item number eight is ordinance 2021 to replace chapter nine, section 901.09 of City Code, which was in your packet.
Yeah, that was based on the conversation of the last council meeting, this ordinance that's been there now incorporates what we had talked about last time with Attorney Larson's suggestion, um, I believe we got it all right. If there's anything that you guys noticed that wasn't the right impression, let us know, but that's what was posted, and I have posted, and so at this point, if the council says that was good, then find your approval, or get published and be approved. Because I value hearing the comments.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the ordinance, uh, 901, 2029.
I'll second.
Motion second? Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All the same? Motion carried. Item number nine is MINDOT Routine Maintenance Agreement, uh, which was in our packet, and there's a bullet point there, resolution 2001, excuse me, 2021, down to 06.
So this is the maintenance agreement that we do, um, every other year with MINDDOT for the routine maintenance that we do, you know, footfalling and, and minor maintenance on the highway system. It's the standard agreement that they've always had, the only difference between this is obviously the date before the new effect on July 1 of this year, so there's a little fiscal year difference in the third way office. And also the increase in the amount of pay to pay to the city by, uh, something like that, so each year it's about $500 addition, so I recommend that we continue to...
It's the same as every year?
Yep.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Item number 10, Legal Services, our FP discussion, which was in our packet, Don, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so, um, Councilman Stan and I met at the Legal Services Committee and we kind of went through and created a, you know, proposal from some other, uh, you know, kind of templates or graphs that, that, uh, that I had gotten. And what we're looking at doing is providing law firms with this proposal to submit bids to us, that goes to us. We're looking for civil work only. Currently, Kreckelberg's office does all of our criminal work, and it's, it's done it for years. They do a little bit of civil work for us when we need, need them to, but it's, and mostly criminal work, for example, when, uh, Attorney Big Larson has done all of our civil work. So we didn't really have at this point any compelling reason to move away from Kreckelberg doing the criminal work. So this proposal basically just looks, looking for a law firm to do civil work. However, I think I do state and we already stated that there may be a situation from time to time when you're asked, where the law firm, the title of the lawsuit, the criminal work, depending on the situation. What the proposal does is it, it asks the, the law firm to submit, uh, the proposal to us by unit fee, and then we'll review them when we get those, uh, after the 18th. And, um, potentially we may give them, we can, uh, when we get back, but, uh, at the June 29 council meeting, we hoped to have a recommendation for the county to approve a law firm of the city, uh, city attorney, and maybe start it through July 1, that's the goal. Through our discussions, you know, we felt that, and Steve, and, um, we felt that it's important to try and stay as local as we possibly can. And with such Kreckelberg, like I said, the law firm does criminal stuff for us now, and it has done some civil work. We obviously wanted to give them an opportunity, but then we thought too, um, there was one other law firm that, um, um, that, you know, I've, I've known for a while too, that does municipal work for another community, and I, a county and probably a couple other ones for that matter. But we thought, instead of reaching out to four or five different law firms, we would just reach out to, to try and do this local. The other law firm, you've done, heard it's called, it's different local, but it's still, you know, not, not too far away. So that's kind of what we're thinking, is just start like handing it to, to law firms and then looking at...
Councilman Stan, do you think?
Yeah, I'm not going to pretend like I'm an expert at this at all. Don's our expert and he did all the work. I did meet with him, we talked, um, and I agree, working local is, is what we want to do. And we've been sure he did well, like everybody there. And if Don, he has an idea who he might work with in Fergus, so I just, I think that's the way to go, um...
There's no statute or anything that we have to have two separate law firms? I mean, we can just do everything through one law firm?
No. In fact, I, I talked to Kreckelberg's office and, um, our criminal thing, and I asked him the question, if, if he sees mostly that there are two separate ones, or they work under one, he said, actually, the majority of cities, that either way, they have separate ones. And, you know, so at the end of the day, and some cities we have, you're saying, for both criminal and civil work, at the end of the day, we may end up with one law firm, but that's okay. It's different attorney, it's not the same attorney, because it's specialized, but even though we want to keep trying to live it, keep it local, that doesn't by any means mean that Kreckelberg is going to get there. We don't know the expertise of their, uh, civil law attorney. So that's why, we're looking to try and see what they have offered, for the same token, we're going to also give an opportunity to another firm that we know is heavily involved in public work. So we'll see how it goes, and, um, you know, just kind of see which one is a good fit for us, and then we'll come back to, to the council with, uh, feeling what.
You want a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I move to, um, to...
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion?
Can, can you just give me an example of what a criminal case would be that we would have?
A criminal case is when we write somebody a ticket.
For...
And all the police stuff is criminal stuff, um, which typically is being involved with upon it, whether it's a nuisance or, or whether it's, you know, some, a robbery, some...
DWI, beating.
All that, yeah.
Domestic assaults, everything.
But ordinance is also like... Dog bite, or horses. Pigeons.
Yeah.
Yeah, same kind of, you know, take a...
Pigeon penalties.
If it is written, that sends it down to the court, so we can determine, determine for that. The civil side is more of a, is, you know, doing legal work for land and stuff.
Property disputes would be an example.
Yeah, well, that's...
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Item number 11 is City Hall Personnel, Danielle, you're going to speak to that?
Yeah, so, uh, Minister Gold and I, um, had, maybe two, I don't know, it's like, um, and we would like to recommend the hire of Sydney Albright as a police clerk. She would start at stage one on the wage scale, and that would be $15 and 23.
What's the title?
Police clerk.
Move to approve the hire of Sydney Albright.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion? Discussion?
They start...
I'm curious, how many could we know of you or maybe?
Um, we had two that applied.
And last time there was something?
Yeah. One start date?
Um, she would be able to start, uh, she'd have to give her two weeks notice and everything, but it would be, um, June 14. Yeah, June 14.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Item number 12 is City Hall Sign Agreement, Don.
So basically, um, based on the, that council meeting, you guys have, uh, kind of approved, can I hear the concept of allowing Lakeland Smiles to utilize that sign board up on the north side of the property? And so I sat down and used the industrial park sign, uh, basically, and it does a template now, is a copy of the hidden practical, I think, or what, uh, but same concept, um, and I, I met with Lakeland Smiles about, about the, the board up there. And what they proposed is, is using the four by eight bottom part of that and the sign company provided, just to see what it would look like. And it'll basically be an annual renewal of the industrial park sign. And the one thing that's different from the one up there, I think the industrial park one's lit up, you know, and this one do it, it's dark at night, but it don't get that benefit, but, um, she was, uh, would agree to, uh, that space for $300 per year, um, and then it'd be renewed every year, which is, I think, uh, comparable. If this sign was up at the industrial park, it would be, it would be four, um, I believe, but again, it's not lit up, it's a different situation, but kind of a way to help them get, um, in the world. This, this would be on both sides, you'd pay it from the law firm itself.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
Why, should the upstairs ever get sold or turned into a business? Would that, I mean, why is it still the Lake Region Professional Building when it's, City Hall has owned it for...
It's just, it's just never been, I think, when we were, when we were up there, did we have something over that that was... Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, we could take and cover it up. I did have a discussion with it, because we don't know what's going to happen up there, and should something happen, she understands that there may be a need to redo that whole sign, you know, but she was fine with that, she just wanted to get something to get more exposure and whatever happened.
So Lake Region Professional Sign, what, what has that made of?
It's just glass or something. I don't even think it's much glass. But, but it's, it's, you know, it's, it's held up really well. But yeah, it's probably time to cover it.
Couldn't it be City Hall or...
Yeah, it didn't look good with the plywood hanging over it.
No, no, it should be...
We got something up. I mean, the bottom part is just a white, I mean, some white plywood, and they're both, it's both top and bottom is four by eight. You know, if you guys don't have a problem with it, we could take the cover and keep that bottom white and just move hers to the top. I don't think it matters for this lower up, if it matters to you guys. She was good at this.
Is that okay?
I, I wouldn't, yeah, I mean, we'll, we're, the better.
That's fine.
And then we'll, we'll move her up to the top. Yeah, bottom part would just be the, it was, I think it was just a white plywood, it'd be three on top. It would look nicer with, yeah, hold it up and do it up on top.
Right.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All the same? Motion carried. Item number 13, City of Interstate Report. Item number 13, city administrator report. Don?
At the last meeting, I held the department head's meeting, and you kind of went over what the state's, uh, rapid decade and order, and how that kind of relates to master plans and stuff like that. I think pretty much, we did to the point where we're closer and closer back to normal, you know, now, currently, uh, something very limited situation, which really would affect us. Um, worked with Danielle, and just, again, I'm set here and ready for it. I attended another one of those monthly, new, new, uh, four, five, ten meetings. Um, I met with Mayor Councilman Foster and Danielle Clark, to discuss utility rates again, you guys, you kind of gave a little more of that information, what we're going to do, and what we've been looking at there, and, uh, prep for and, and conducted the utility plan, and, and, uh, and that way, great stain of people's services, just, just got some things down to the wastewater plant. And we recently had a loss down there, a power outage, which came in that new pre-teenage building, which, you guys remember, you know, that was pre-level for this, and the very lowest level, it was, um, you know, where we had pumps and stuff like that, and the sewage comes into the system. And with that power outage, you know, it happened on the main breaker in that building, and the alarm didn't go off for whatever reason, with that whole lower area, which is about thirteen by thirty-some feet by eighteen feet each lower level, that probably filled up up to the second level with sewage. And yeah, and there was no alarm, because the guys discovered it when it went to work. And then, and, uh, there was no power because the same electrical system goes to the gate. Of course, they figured out that the electric, you know, they get the gate open, and that was the only, the gate in that building was the only power that was out. The rest of the plant is fine. And so they went in there and saw this, we, we don't know why the power went out, but to make the long story short, we've been working to, uh, get it all cleared out of there, uh, super subject with quality, with their equipment to pump it all out. Uh, we've had to take pumps apart, and there's been electrical stuff down there that's got to be swapped out, and so we've got an insurance company involved, and we're probably looking at a, well, I don't know, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollar plan, that'll kind of get all done. So, uh, the insurance company sent me a dress last, yesterday, and they were coming off here in the fifth and fifth. So, working on that, uh, I attended MPCA with Mayor Fraser, a virtual meeting regarding the watershed restoration and protection strategy that the state, the MPCA is working at, and both Max and David Oles, um, they had a study done, a report done, Senator Ron, explaining how to protect watersheds and, and, you know, uh, rivers and lakes again. And we, we, we attended this meeting because of the watershed that we exist in, and they're looking at all this stuff, and we were interested in our biggest setting, if there are other new requirements in our permit at the wastewater plant because of this report. Uh, the good news is, you know, they're not, there shouldn't be any changes to our permit, which is really good. So we wanted to kind of listen on what they're looking at doing and how that will affect us. I also attended the leader Minnesota city virtual meeting regarding the stimulus fund that are coming out again. And they're doing this, this virtual meeting, um, every couple of weeks, at least for sure month to month, and it's kind of, we're trying to get all the information we need. We still don't have a clue really how we can use this, or even how much we're giving for sure. Uh, the next meeting, I think, is, um, next week, and I hope I end up having an idea on how many dollars we can give and how we can use this. Um, I spent a little bit more time on, I'm, I'm doing, you know, research, and looking into, uh, police information, wages and all that type of stuff, and I also met with the mayor and Councilman Mark Raff, and kind of went over some of the proposals from the union and some of our preliminary responsive, but I'm still kind of waiting for some more information before we can get together. Just kind of want to make sure we're all on the same page and have the same information as we go into the next meeting, which we don't, I don't know what happens yet, but hopefully within the, uh, within the next month, anyway. Um, one reason I pushed, you know, we pushed out that part is because I'm going to be done with this, with, with, um, this situation. I also, well, then I met with the insurance just on the wastewater plant, to look at that stuff down there. Also attended the May twenty fourth, which was last night, the council steering committee meeting, and, um, attended an in-house, uh, twenty twenty four project design meeting today, which was attended by some midot, and then, uh, Mayor Fraser, and Mayor, uh, Councilman Foster, as well as Eads, uh, even some, some of the committees who are up there. It was, it was a good meeting, it was a good discussion, so. Uh, they plan on having another one, it wasn't a public meeting, but, um, having another one where they're here, we got that open, we got the screen displayed up, uh, there'll be another one. We're over mainly Highway fifty-nine, probably today, and, um, the next meeting, we're going to talk a little bit more on, like, one of the segments. And then the intent is, that kind of firms up, is helping them firm up, um, all of our discussions, past discussions, everything, and wants to design, and once they get that stuff firmed up, they're talking about, um, getting that information out in, you know, public form, to get, you know, getting the base onto the community and receive that from the community. Uh, also looking at, uh, how to live more of the, the, the roundabout, and putting the roundabout up on, you know, in, in, working with them to get a demo up there. Um, we're trying on, when they do that demo, I think they have a tenant's date, so I don't remember what it was, and, you know, they plan on having, uh, cameras set up, drones flying overhead and everything else, so that people can really see that how these, you know, fifty-some foot trucks or whatever, police truck, are going to be, you know, kind of working roundabout. And then they still plan on doing that. A demo, um, as far as the parking and stuff downtown, the Maryland and stuff downtown, they just can't do roundabouts. But, uh, anyway, so I attended that meeting today.
Don, you said, you mentioned that at the drinking plant, is that where they would do a demo, or are you telling them about the roundabout?
They're actually, yeah, they're actually going to, they're working with the drinking plant to get space up there to actually do, set up, up the roundabout, and, and let vehicles, you know, trucks basically, you know, kind of drive through the drinking hall, you know, based on the sizes and, and, you know.
Also, could you tell me more about the alarm system? Is that our responsibility, or?
No, it was, you know, we, one of the things that we're trying to figure out, we got the electric, electricians that have come in, uh, with, uh, trying to figure out, well, might have been a, you know, a switch and a BSB that basically set, uh, set the master breaker off, um, why the call-out alarm didn't, didn't go. I don't, you know, we're looking into that, but I don't know if we would be able to do that.
So who is in, who, who, who's stuck there? That, who's that?
Well, that system that was put in, we got it put in by, uh, InControl, uh, back when that plant was done in two thousand twelve, thirteen, whatever the year it was. Um, but whether we'd be able to tell whether it was their system that was responsible if the call-out didn't happen or not, we don't know. And if you don't know for sure, it's going to be hard to, to finish, you know, one thing or two. Because we, to be honest, we have no idea for sure why that works.
Sounds like you have, like, two alarms down there, but I don't think it's real.
Well, we're looking at that. That's one of the things that we were talking about in the general sense, about the wastewater plant, and what do we think about to improve the system down there, to make sure that, you know, we get the alarms we want to get the alarms, and, of course, we get them.
There's something written on it.
And also, the communication system, part of the communication system down there, that we're talking about, is, you know, we're finding that, those, those control boards that we have, we didn't put enough of control board, and, you know, we, we, we lost a few of those, these power glitches and stuff like this, too, in the, why does that happen? Well, when we did the new plant, the new plant, we didn't design in new communication systems. We, we kind of kept that part of it what it was, because it wasn't what you need to do, we think. Uh, and, and everything was kind of built around, keeping the same communication systems in place. And, you know, now, here we are, five years later, technology's improving, we're figuring out, we're finding that, you know, we lost a couple of these boards through lightning strikes, we had to go out and, and, obviously, insurance companies, you know, cover that type of thing, but, um, what we're finding is these old boards are becoming obsolete. And even the ones that were in the, in the plant already, we didn't, they weren't designed to use in the last country, but there's things that's just changing, so any type of findings, when we replace these boards, we're finding that it was really hard to get them combined. So a couple of them, essentially, we got fit, but, um, so, so part of the discussion was, okay, what's the next, uh, is down going to happen?
Just an idea, but you can buy it totally independent, so.
We, yeah, some of it, like on the list agent, I think we have to call, to ask all of these, uh, one, one system that we not run, and how calls the guys on their cell phone, but it's just how the, the data system, all work across the system, and how it communicates windows and alarms.
Any other question? Thank you. Item number fourteen, mayor report. Don, you heard a lot of the activities I've been, also looking on last, a couple of weeks, attended Pelican Rapids Complete Street Steering Committee meeting on May thirteenth, uh, attended the Pelican Rapids Utility Committee meeting with, uh, Director Danielle and Councilman Foster, Administrator Solga, that same day. Attended a local foods, local places steering committee meeting on May seventeenth, attended a watershed protection meeting that Don talked about on May eighteenth. Also, on behalf of City Pelican Rapids, attended Memorial's visitation on May nineteenth for Bill Henning of Holly, who was our insurance adjuster with the WR Berkeley, who were lead of Minnesota City. He died unexpectedly a couple of weeks ago, age of sixty-three, and, uh, he'll be sadly next to you, but find a person to work with in, over the many, at least thirty years he helped us out here at City Pelican Rapids. Uh, attended a police union contract meeting with Councilman Mark Raff, Administrator Solga. Uh, met with Administrator Solga to review the agenda for this afternoon's council meeting, and then last night, attended the comprehensive file steering committee meeting for the city hall, and then attended this morning, the twenty twenty-four Pelican Rapids Complete Street meeting. And then, prior, excuse me, prior to this meeting, attended the local board review and equalization meeting. Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. See no other business or immediate, motion adjourned?
I move.
I second.
Motion second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same? Meeting adjourned.